Great.
The City of Plymouth Plan Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, November 3rd is being called to order at 6:32 PM. If we get a call vote.
All right. Commissioner Covert?
Present.
Commissioner Moreno is not present this evening. Commissioner Gomes?
Present.
Commissioner Vice Sullivan? Vice Chair Sullivan is not here at the moment. Chair Flaherty?
Here. All right, let's all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, every being and every creature. All right, so our first item of business is approval of the commission regular meeting agenda for November 3rd, 2022. Go ahead and make motion to approve the regular meeting agenda. I'll make the motion in a second.
Thank you.
Let there roll call on that.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Covert?
Oh, just approving.
Oh, approving the minutes. The agenda, sorry.
I approve, yes.
Commissioner Gomes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan is absent, Commissioner Moreno is absent, and Chair Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, the approval of the commission regular meeting agenda for November 3rd, 2022 is approved. Let's go ahead and move to public comments. So anybody in the audience, or if you're participating electronically via the link on WebEx, and wishing to speak may do so through a public comment by using the raise your hand feature on Zoom webinar. When dialing by phone, use star nine to raise the lower your hat, star six to mute on your phone. And can anybody in the audience, or if anybody online that would like to make public comment? All right, one more time, anybody online that would like to make a public comment, right? Is that hard to make a agenda?
Yeah, I'm a little raised, sorry.
All right, thank you, we'll move on. All right, let's go to item. Item 4.1, which is a presentation by Sam Sherman from the California Department of Transportation, District 10, regarding the CalTrans Clean California Beautification Limit Project Watch. Let's approach, just turn on the speaker.
Thank you Chairman Flaherty for having me here to present what I think is a really important project for the community of Plymouth. I do have a short presentation that I would like to present. This was presented at the Amber County Transportation Commission Service Act, as well as the City Council. And so it's going to be very similar to those presentations. I can go through, or you can interrupt, if you have any time, plus questions, it's rather short, thank you. So real quickly, actually first, I just wanted to say that I have a lot of interest in Amber County. I've been involved as project manager of projects throughout Amber County since the 90s. I left for about thirty and a half years out of state, I came back to District 10 later on. And I've been assigned more projects over to the east side of our district, Twong and Mariposa. But I was involved in the Setagree bypass, I was a project manager on that, through the, basically a project approval process. And there was a bunch of projects in Jackson that I've been involved in, some Sukinon projects and so forth. So I have a lot of interest in Amber County, I love it very much. Real quickly on the Clean California Beautification Program. Clean California was a program set up by the governor, it's kind of his thing. We allocated about $1.2 billion to this program, and that was to start beautifying and cleaning up our environment. The litter abatement program is probably our biggest component. And that's a three years where it's our local grant program, that was a three year program too, and beautification, we were given two years. But I'm taking some risks in extending some of our project completion into that third year for some of these beautifications, because I think it's important to do things right, and a key part of this is community engagement, as you'll see. But essentially, the 7149 Clean California Program, there were four goals identified. One was reducing the amount of waste and debris within our isolation, enhance rehabilitation, restore and install measures to beautify and improve our public spaces, and enhance public cultural connection, community placemaking by improving public spaces for walking and recreation, and advance equity for underserved communities. And you'll see this theme is realized through this particular project that was proposed. So the purpose of the project is we, and this has evolved a little bit, as it should. That's essentially the purpose of the project we have programmed for the City of Plymouth. And Amber County, we enhance and unify state route 49 while serving historically underrepresented community of Plymouth. And there was a need identified for a trail system, and also to enhance and unify the around about. So this need has evolved a little bit. I do want to explain that a little bit. So when the call came for us to develop projects for the beautification component, my direction from my district director was to kind of spread the wealth a little bit. And so District 10 represents and is responsible for eight counties within our district, three in the valley, Stanislaw, Versed, St. King, and move eastward, you've got Calaveras, Amador, Twong, and Mariposa, Alpine. So we tried to identify projects that were either on the books, or, you know, I went to the community, say, hey, what do you have? This money is basically free, we want to use it for this purpose. And so these three themes came out, one of the first ones was kind of the gateway signs. And you do have some, I won't say primitive, but there are some gateway signs, you know, like welcome to Plymouth. Some of our other projects are much grander, bigger in scale for gateway, like Calaveras County, they're doing monumental signs. They'd already have a robust sign of a wayfinding and gatefinding plan that Angels Camp had come up with, and we expanded that to their communities. Similar with Mariposa and Twong. The roundabout was something that I kind of had, and I happened to share an office with a project manager that was on the roundabout. And one of the first things unfortunately that goes on a lot of these projects is the landscape. We run out of money, we build the basic infrastructure and just kind of leave it, now they try to bear minimum. And so this was an opportunity to maybe add some enhancements to that roundabout. That's still kind of on the books, the gateway signs. We dropped, and further discussions with some of the community, we set up some meetings with some community leaders. The trail system kind of came out out of the blue for me, talking with some of the folks here. And please understand, we didn't have a lot of time. You know, I came on board August, and I had to have full proposals by the end of December. So coming up with schedules and everything else. So we put this here, knowing that, you know, we could tweak it, but the trail system seems like a good idea. We added it with basically a fund budget amount of $1.90. Through subsequent discussions with some community leaders, the trail system seemed to percolate to the top as being higher reports than say the even the roundabout. The roundabout, what we still have on the table, if we have funds, we'd like to do that. So talking about the trail system, this was a pretty primitive thing that I drew up for the proposal. We, you know, just, if you've been in the community, you kind of recognize you can't put a trail system completely on one side, particularly on the north side, on the west side, there's a lot of drainage issues that are going to be fairly problematic. So we knew we had to kind of cross at some point, and then continue up on the eastern side. And that's why this was kind of a primitive view of it. So this was our original layout that we had, it shows the gateway signs and the roundabout on there. So these were the three components we originally proposed. And as I mentioned, through subsequent conversations, and we brought in the Veterans Park of folks there as well. What we established was the Veterans Park, we're going to do some enhancements to there, and they're going to have a trail system. They asked us if we could extend our trail up to where they were going to have their trail, and then intersect and be able to connect that, it made a lot of sense. And then that also gives us an opportunity to cross the road there, not at the, at the Empire Street intersection, which is, seems a little bit difficult, it's kind of a crazy intersection. So it'd be more of a, what we call a mid-block type of crossing. And then we would continue up on the eastern side. This is just a concept, because we didn't have good surveys at that point. We have since sent our survey folks, and we gambled the files the other day. So we brought in an architectural engineering consultant on board to help us with further refine our design with actual surveys. So there were some delays from very ago, from when we had the concept to developing this, I had some delays being consulted on board. So we haven't done a lot, I couldn't burn a lot of resources with them, so they drew this up, and this is what I presented. If you'll notice, coming up the west side, we want to start down at Centreford Drive. We understand that there's a lot of folks in that area that like to walk this route, so seem like a likely stopping point on the southern part, and then continue that all the way up to the roundabout. The crossing itself is somewhat difficult. We don't normally like to put road crossings for pedestrians in high-speed locations. And if we do, a lot of times the mitigation measures are fairly extensive. They all want these big, what they call a HOX system, and don't ask me what that's, what that stands for. But it'd be this huge overhead that are controlled by pedestrians, and it stops the traffic. There are simpler ways that are still standard nationally, that the FHWA recognizes. Most would be used up as activated signs. You can put inroad lights as well. There's discussions whether even paint markings on the road. And pedestrians sometimes feel like when there are any crosswalk there, there's a little force field that protects them. And that's not always the case. So by not providing those actual painted lines, sometimes it get, it kind of reinforces the feeling that, you know, you need to use this with caution at this location. We've, there, nationally, there have been trail crossings all the time of highways, just generally not. A lot of times in park settings and not go high-speed routes, so that's a discussion. We do have, you know, constrained funds of $1 million, so we want to maximize our mitigation measures for that particular location. I'm pushing our traffic safety engineers to look at reducing the speed in this particular location. I think that's really our best approach. I'll kind of, oh, another thing I need to point out, so right at the 49er Village, and I think they're trying to change names. And when my girlfriend and I first got to try to camp there, it was already cool, I'd like to come back and do it again. But right outside, you'll notice there's a color system that crosses St. 49. When they put in, it's kind of man-made, well, it's probably a natural creek that crossed at one point. But it's created this riparian zone that's very sensitive. And to actually cross that, it takes a lot more time to get the proper permits for that. So we're going to have to come up with some kind of sequence to kind of go around it, start stop, you decide that little riparian zone. I've got my district director approval to initiate a subsequent project, maybe to enhance our crossing, our edge crossing, and also cross the riparian zone. With something like this, we do have some standard details, so it'd be basically a pre-manufactured bridge that we could drop in place. It could be fairly what we call accelerated bridge construction. We have pre-manufactured apartments, I think those end, and then drop the pedestrian crossing over that riparian zone, so we can protect and mitigate those impacts.
Just a common question, so that's, that's kind of where that picture, the top picture is.
Yes.
Yeah, right there.
The, the path itself would be like a class one. So we're looking at about a 10-foot asphalt path on an aggregate base, and there's a five to eight feet, I think, separation between the edge of shoulder and this path. We have a base, essentially eighty feet, I believe, in right away in that location from center line, so it'll be 40, over some of the rightway. And that's one of the things our survey folks are going to give us, so that we have to stay with it now. We don't want to acquire property, because that takes months and months, and that would be like this project. Anyway, that's, and you can do some landscaping in between the road and the path itself. We probably aren't going to provide a lot of vegetation types of things, because that means we would have to irrigate it, and there'd be a planned establishment period as well. Those are some things that we can add along. But I think first and foremost, when you focus on getting a trail, that's a safety enhancement for the community as well. I think it will, it'll look nice, and it'll help beautify the community. Just real quickly on the roundabout enhancement, this was taken by the prior, well, he was a New York accountant here at the city. And then, I think he was briefly acting city manager, and I can't remember his name at the moment.
Michael Colton.
Yes, yes, he kind of helped, and he put the proposal together, and took some snapshots and sent it to me. So I think this was his picture. I think that there's some additional things we could do to enhance that. The community leaders that we spoke with, as part of our project team meetings, community engagement effort, they named three things, I put them on here. They would like to incorporate into this roundabout on the historical Native American recreational. So we did have our landscape architect come up with a concept, it's on the table. And if we have funds, we'd like to take it back to the community and get some input on that. But I think it was pretty cool, at least for starting point, for discussion purposes. So our project steps in the schedule, preliminary design concepts, environmental clearance, which we've already received. We've got that, this, so that phase is pretty much done. Community engagement is still kind of what we're involved in. In fact, tonight is really part of that, you know, just reaching out to the community, getting input and currents. But, you know, we like to, you know, have the community behind it. Frankly, we don't want to put something out there nobody wants, and your folks are going to live with it. So everything needs to be yours. And design, so we're a little bit behind on this, though, we're thinking if we can fast-track that with our consultants and our own District 10 landscaper, we'd like to have our design probably well completed by the end of January. Obviously, it's been a little bit, so it'll probably be what we call ready to list, meaning all the design, all the constraints are clear, and we're ready to advertise. Got the early next year award, so we could probably start construction in springtime, summer of next year. We'd like to have it complete by the, by the end of the year, before winter, also around. Now, our budget, PSE stands for Plan, Specs, and Estimate. These are our support cost faces, so environmental, we have user bare bones, cost for us. So I'm trying to keep our, our support costs down and maximize the amount that we can apply to the construction capital. So that's what construction needs, that would be somebody that would oversee and distribute, and search and contract, and capital we have, just slightly under a million for this project, so we're really trying to get as much done as we can. That's my short presentation, I'm open for questions.
Excellent, thanks so much, any questions from the other council members?
I don't, I'm kind of wondering where the location, starting at Centrefordville and going up where it, why it was decided those spots, is it just because it's going to be hard to connect Hawksview? Or, I don't know, I'm making it clear, but, or what stage the project really is in as far as design? But I'm just wondering why this location was chosen, or that certain communities were chosen, or?
No, not in particular, that was just some feedback we got from, from the city. Centrefordville is, I guess, a new development that's coming out of that. There's some, some folks in that area. I'm not familiar with the community that lives there, but it sounded like there were some community members that do walk along, along this stretch. So we had to have a beginning and end, just to be able to, you know, put it, constrain it, and, and some cost, or is it, is there an interest in extending it farther south, or starting it farther more?
I guess I just heard for years about how there's no connectivity between Hawksview and Main Street. And I just wondered if it was because of the eight-foot rightway, and the way that that road is kind of high up there that made it, where it wasn't connected?
Can you describe where Hawksview is?
It's the next community.
Oh, farther north?
Yeah.
Is this, we're going to be constructed like the map is, on the left, dark, and go to the right, or?
It seemed like that there was kind of a.
Piece meal.
We were trying to do it continuous, whatever we do. And so what I understand in discussions, some community members, was maybe we start from the north and push it as far south as we can with the money, rather than start from Centrefordville and kind of shorten it. So that would be my approach.
Yeah, so I think you're questioning it, Commissioner Gomes. So the roundabout, you go around the roundabout, you're coming south to north. You go further north, it's probably a quarter of a mile, maybe? And it would be the community that's on the left-hand side, sort of, a whole, north of the roundabout.
Correct, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I was just kind of presented by various individuals at the southern end. There's nothing to say that that's not needed as well, but we have to start somewhere.
Yeah. So from what I know, I know that the city has been looking at other alternatives to figure out a way to connect Hawksview. It would be not along the highway, so then this type of money wouldn't work, because it's for rightways.
It's for state rightway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we, if the city is able to connect the other way through the neighborhoods, you know, directly this way?
Right.
This money wouldn't be used.
So it's not that that idea is still going forward, the other path?
That I believe they're still in discussion and, and working on figuring out an alternative way to make that happen.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to kind of make sure that it wasn't just, I don't know, I just.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean. Yeah, and I think the, the rightway and the road and the to park beyond either side of it, this is a much more difficult spot to put a path, because it does slope down and kind of slopes back up, where this is a little bit, it appears easier, because it's flatter.
Right, I think it's better not to have the kids walking on that path.
Yes, who are going through the neighborhood to get in here, then, highway.
I just wanted to check about it, whatever. Thank you.
We were going after what we consider kind of low-hanging fruit, something that we can easily implement. So this, this fit that narrative better where we originally proposed it. I've heard of extending that, I've heard that concept, but she's right, this has to be within the state rightway for this particular amount of life.
And then, kind of the, whatever you're saying, where there could be eventually a bridge or something, where you have to come in because of the, the water. So it looks like that section's going to be pretty close to the highway.
Yes, we have to, where people are walking down, or. We just try to maximize some shoulder area, and then fast-track a project to bring in some kind of a bridge system.
Okay. And then, like in that area, would there be like signs to say, slow down, there's a lot, there's a, there's a path ahead, or something like that?
You mean for the right, where we have to just kind of temporarily circumvent? Or are you talking about the crossing itself?
I'm sure there's a little bit of both, though, the crossing is one, which I'm sure there will be signs.
Yes.
Which actually may. Which actually may mitigate the other risk of just having the person go closer to the road for that water.
Oh, right. We, we have to have some signs technically in place to warn whatever the path users, that there's gonna be a kind of a ruck into the path. I mean, we'll, we'll have kind of a way around it. But yeah, I, I want to initiate a project and fast track it to complete the project.
And so what you were saying is the first option is to really ensure we do the trail north to south as priority and then landscaping will be subsequent around that.
For the roundabout. And I understood that there may be some, I don't know, either city or some of the community members are gonna go after a grant for that. And I did want to point out on the local grant component, so local agencies were able to go after Clean California funds that could be used off system, being not on the state ride, but other public spaces. And so there was close to 300 million that were allocated statewide for a lot of agencies. There was a lot of people that competed for it. There was so much need and a lot of agencies that didn't get any funding or were awarded. There's a second round of about a hundred million that's gonna become available. So that may be something that community is interested in and pursuing for this other project. And get some good grant writers because it's, it's highly competitive.
There you go. And whoever took the picture in the last one, it looks like it is today. So that's a good time for this presentation. It must have been around town. And any other questions?
Actually, I wondered if the crosswalks were, you had said, did you say where they were or potentially going to be? The, where you were talking about the lights or to go across the highway?
Like a rapid flashing vehicles for a pet crossing?
Yeah.
It would be, you know where the Veterans Park is? So basically right there. So they, they have their own concept of a new path system within the Veterans Park that they're proposing. And we would try to connect to that path. So it'd be, I think, a nice fit, nice collaboration.
Yeah.
I think another really good point about where this, where the walkway is housed or planned is during the fair, we all know that it just gets crazy, right? There are people parked up and down the highways. So I think, one, the location of the crosswalk is perfect for that. Because there's a lot of safety concerns when the fair comes, right? There's hundreds of people parked across the road and.
They're just running.
Yeah, just running across the road. It's surprising how it hasn't gotten hit already. So this, that's a great opportunity there as well as, I think, the path going south and north from that point would mitigate some of that risk as well. So it's good.
Anyway, I'm excited for the community and appreciate the input, the interest in this particular project, so.
Is this going to be able to be stepped, leaving, doing on both sides of the roads? Or are you gonna try to get one side and do the other side?
No, it's essentially just proposed for one side of the road. We just can't take it continuously from the south end to the north on one side only. We have to cross just because of the park being the drainage.
I thought so, right? Sometimes they try to do certain aspects on both sides. And I don't know if we've got right of way access that would compensate for that. So that was the reason I was asking.
It'd be nice. I think it's gonna be nice to at least have a one path, at least initially, and we can grow from there.
All right. And let's go ahead and take any comments from the community that's online. If anybody on FedEx would like to take a comment, please use raise your hand feature. I'll just give a few more comments for that. Perfect. You have a comment, please raise your hand.
Nothing at this time.
So yeah, the last comment I'd like to make is, once we get some more refined design, once our design consultant has gone through the TOPO survey and, and refined the design, we'd like to come back to the community and hold some kind of a public workshop or a public information meeting, just to present the project, not so much. You know, changing the project too much, because we're kind of running out of time. But we'd like to present to the community so that they know what's coming and the reason why and the purpose and need for the project are all important.
Excellent. And the other final comments?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, all right, great, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item four point two, which is our presentation by Barbara McVeil on how fire can be a firewise community. Barbara, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to talk about firewise. This is something that is very near and dear to my heart. We moved into the county about six years ago, from Lake County. We were actually burned out from the valley fire in 2015. We just talked about that earlier. But it is hard to, to go back and try to reclaim something when it's been burnt. Our whole community was burnt. So it wasn't just a couple of houses, it was everyone. So when we moved here, I actually found out about a presentation that was being conducted and filled out by a town chief, Chef Hacala. And he gave a firewise presentation on the importance of communities being resilient and being able to help themselves, being able to mitigate their property and be able to, to actually just become partners with our first responders to be able to make it safer for everyone. So I, I thought, once I listened to his presentation, I knew that it would be something that would be great for this area. I live in Burke Ranch and because of, you know, the ruralness of that area, we have so many trees, so much brush. And we have a lot of elderly residents that aren't always able to be able to do things for themselves. So the idea of having a community program to where we could, we could help each other, we could take some ownership and some responsibility for ourselves, our own properties, sounded like a great idea. So I went back and I pitched it to the homeowners association and they thought it was great. And, and then we moved forward to that. We, we were certified last March as a firewise community. We were recertified last month as a firewise community. You have to recertify every month, or I'm sorry, every year to be able to be in good standing. So it was something that, that has become a process to where we've become more of a community. We've become more resilient as a community. And people feel empowered about the things that we do. And I wanted to be able to share that with you in hopes of being able to have kind of a regional experience of being prepared and being able to mitigate, you know, our properties and our areas. So I had a short presentation and also have a short video that's part of that presentation that I can see because it, it actually, the video shows best practices. And it shows a community that's been through a fire and some of the things that they're, some of the steps that they've taken to be able to recover from it.
Space bar, I think that.
Oh, okay.
That should work.
Again, just understanding the program itself. It provides a network for residents and communities to become more resilient. So you, you have the ability to, to kind of mitigate your circumstances before a wildfire occurs. We had the Caldo fire last year. One of the things that we had been working on this program for about a year. And so we had a lot of people that had raised their, their tree limbs, had cut down the brush, had taken some hardening, you know, made some hardening around their homes and thought more about evacuations, thought more about go bags, thought more about helping their neighbors, thought more about being a part of the solution to something before an actual fire occurred. So, so that's, that's part of what Firewise does. It, it gives everybody that collaboration to be able to, to mitigate a situation for that. The program is entered and administered by the National Firewise Prevention Association, so the NFPA. It's also partnered with the US Fire Service. And here is, is our partner is CalFire. And they also administer the program here in the state of California. So individuals and communities who participate in this program on a volunteer basis, how they participate is doing things that they would already do. For instance, raking their leaves, pruning their trees, making sure that they have some clearance around their home so that if there was a fire and you did have embers that occurred, that ignition zone from like zero to five feet within their house wouldn't ignite as, as quickly as we could. They, if they, they wouldn't mitigate those circumstances. So it's strictly voluntary, but what we, what we try to do is make sure that they're motivated to be able to be a part of the program. So we have exercises that we conduct. Usually try to do that twice a year. Last year, or I'm sorry, last April, it was past April, we had evacuation exercise. And that was attended by CalFire, Amidale Fire Prevention District, Amidale County Sheriff's Office, our community residents, some folks from the city as well, senior plan, and some other, other communities around in Amidale County that kind of wanted to see what we were doing as far as how we conducted our exercises. We also conduct workshops. And, you know, with some of the workshops we will have, we talk about planning for the next exercise, but we also talk about some of the things that residents can do. We'll sign them up for code red, we'll build a process with them to make sure that they are prepared and for any type of emergency, not just a wildfire. This video will, again, it talks about some residents, that talks about what firewise means to them and some of the things that they've done to help their community and their property to be more resilient. And again, one of the things that's, that I love the most about this program is that it gives property owners, homeowners, the opportunity to partner with first responders. So, you know, historically, we've always wanted to say that government first responders are the ones that will come in and save the day. And nine times out of ten, that's true. But now in this, this state of where we are, especially in California, we have to be, become a part of that solution. And so this program, you hear about some folks that have done just that. It, it brings us all together. It helps us all become a part of the solution.
About five years ago, I was in the evacuation zone and I had to remember something about that. That was very, very scary. Embers can travel up to two miles. They're gonna come in on your property and that's what's gonna start the vegetation on fire. I am excited about reducing wildfire risk because it does, this type of thing still can't be avoided. We're working with the homeowners here today, reducing the wildfire risk. Collaboration is really key in this whole process. It's never one person making all the decisions. The homeowner makes the choices as far as what gets from the root and what they want to have done.
It talks about how fires spread either with ground cover and pushes the fuel to the ladder to catch trees on fire. This will talk us about how, how the risk is allowed by our, the top of our trees and the bottom of our trees are likely to catch fire and it's good to create space for them to do as well.
The most common misconception about reducing your wildfire risk is that it's clear cutting. It's not clear cutting, it's about making choices.
We were able to identify trees that we wanted to preserve on the property.
Were left out of it at all. So when we talk about the whole ignition zone, we want to start from the area zero to five feet away from your house. You want to make sure that you have your pine needles off the roof or any of the leaves that are gonna collect up there, anything that's gonna be gutters. And then you go down to the bottom of your house, look where wind has blown the needles and the leaves. That's exactly where the embers will blow in it. And so the embers are gonna light those things on fire, which is gonna light your house on fire. And then from there, five feet to the thirty feet, we want to look at that, feather out the vegetation, stagger things, make spaces between the vegetation, so it's gonna be a lot safer. Also, you're looking at grasses and shrubs, those can be highly plantable. You want to make sure that you keep those knocked down so that those aren't the ladder fuel then to the next vegetation they have. This side of the property is great. I saw the before pictures, I saw where you had trees leaning over the deck, they were very close to your house. If I were moving those trees because of their potential problems, this is much, much safer. You can do this yourself, it's not that hard. You have paraplasters, you don't have to have a chainsaw and hand tools, but it's pretty rewarding. It's like housekeeping outdoors. You can do this yourself, you can have the landscapers, tree companies, essentially your private apartment, they come on and give them some ideas, stay close to them. Anybody that has a knowledge of fire behavior, it's important on your property. Also, somebody that has an eye for what it's gonna look like when they're done. I was so nervous and that maybe it would look so different, but it's beautiful now. It looks great. It was a fun day, actually. We hope that we've done enough to make it safe before our house, safe before the wildfire, right? We said it coming.
Our neighbors are now very interested in having the same thing go to their property. And if we can get that done, it's gonna make the whole neighborhood safe.
Scientist group, they're doing this type of work to reduce your wildfire risk. Okay, very successful. Make a smart choice.
One of the things that I wanted to mention was that Amidale Fire Safety Council was also a partner in all of this. And in fact, they have staff that will come out and give you an assessment, take a look at, at your situation. They have grants that's administered through CalFire and distributed them by NFDA where you can do, you can have shipping days, you can have clearances, like fire clearance zones. And just different things, just different proposals that you might make, want to consider for your city and for surrounding communities, communities, they can actually fund a lot of this. So this is the zones that they were talking about on the video. The most important, the most critical zone that is usually talked about is the zero to five feet. And that's because of the embers. That's the part where taking the leaves off your roofs, making sure that you don't have a lot of vegetation that's growing right next to the house, making sure that you don't have trees just overhanging the roof will help in case those embers from a fire two miles away might drop down. Next zone, the intermediate zone, five to thirty feet is where you can actually, again, you can limit up those trees, make sure you don't have the ladder infect. And when you go from thirty to a hundred feet, I think, and I think now they're saying about a hundred and fifty feet, is that that's where you have your defensible space. So if a wildfire lets come, that will slow it down, not stop it altogether before it goes into those other zones. So how do you become certified? Again, it's through the National Fire Association, Fire Protection Association, through your program, Firewise program. And the first thing that you would do is just create a committee or a board, someone that will be responsible for handling all the firewise day to day issues and some of the challenges that you have. There'll also be ones that will go out and sell it to you, a community, to your residents, talk about some of the things that you can provide. They will propose different things to you as far as some of, some of the proposals that you can use at the city. And they will also just, they will manage the programs. So that's the very first step, is to create a board committee. The community size to be able to become certified is a minimum of eight dwellings, so eight houses. And then a maximum of twenty-five, twenty-five hundred. If you have over twenty-five hundred, you can separate those out. For instance, if you had three thousand, you could say, this is Clement Zone A or Clement Zone B or whatever you want to call it. And then you would have two separate, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be one community at that time. It would be two separate firewise communities, but you'd still be, still, you know, do things together. The next thing you would do is, is just to, just to plan. Take a look at your area, your city, your subdivisions, you know, whatever area that you want to look at and do an assessment. You know, some of the people that you want to bring in to help do this assessment would be some of your stakeholders. So that would be maybe some of your residents, maybe CalFire, Amidale Fire Safety Council, Amidale Fire Prevention District, Sheriff's Department. Anyone that would have a stake in what happens within your city could be a part of that assessment team. And then what they would do is go out and kind of take a look at some of your structures. They wouldn't have to look at every single one. But what they would want to do is kind of get a feeling about. what type of structures you have, what type of roofs that those structures have, what are your vulnerabilities and your risks? What are some of the things that you need to mitigate? And they, once they had the assessment, then once you completed that, that would be turned into the National Fire Association. And then once you had that, and once you had that signed off, you would create an action plan. Your action plan basically is what you saw that you want to mitigate. So for instance, if you had 30% of your dwellings were wood shingles, maybe you want over a three-year period or a five-year period. Maybe you would want to help residents replace those with asphalt shields or, or metal or whatever the case may be to make it more fire resistant. So your action plan would be, will actually just mirror your community. The things that you want to accomplish, the amount of time that you want to accomplish that in. The good thing about this plan is that if you don't, if you're not able to accomplish everything that first year, it can be rolled over to second year or to the third year. And again, the action plan becomes a living plan. So as your needs change, as a community changes, your action plan can change also. The next phase is basically just to do it. Once you get certified, you design your exercises, your tabletops, your workshops, chipping days. Whatever it is that you would like to do for your community, however you would want to get your community involved, you, you design that, you do that, you set up those exercises or whatever they happen to be with your stakeholders. And have them be a part of that process of setting everything up, designing that. We usually work with Amidale Fire Safety Council, Amidale Park Prevention to be able to design our exercises to where we have our goals and objectives for our community, but also so that they can exercise some of their goals and objectives. For instance, this past May when we had our exercise, some of their, they had just finished academy class and some of the firefighters were new. So they had a couple of things that they wanted to exercise while they were going, what we wanted to do with evacuation. So we had our goals and objectives and they had theirs as well. And then we kind of meshed them all together. So it, it helped them build their training and it helped our community become a little more resilient. One of the requirements that, once you become certified, one of the requirements of being a certified community is that you are required to annually invest a total of one hour per resident, so per dwelling, I'm sorry. So for instance, if you said that you had 100 dwellings within the community, then you would be responsible for having 100 hours of work that was done within that community. So I, and I don't know about you guys, I'm pretty sure that we all probably spent 100 hours a month just going out ripping leaves and you know, cutting grass and just doing all that stuff. Well, that's all part of, you know, it's really that's how the things that we do on a daily basis or a weekly basis are part of what they want us to continue to do to be able to have that fire mitigation. 590 California firewise communities. And as many as it, as that is, believe it or not, we were not, we just became the first state to become number one in the nation as far as firewise communities. There was another state that I can't even remember right now, but it was in the Midwest. If you can believe that, that had more firewise communities than that we did, but, but we just reached our number. In Amidale County, we had around 13 or so, but we have probably about 20 that have submitted their assessment plans and their action plans to become certified. And you can see, you can look at a lot of the margin of country, but there's a lot around the county and we're getting more every day. One of the things that we would like to do in Burke Ranch is to be able to look at our surrounding areas like the city of Plymouth, Drytown, Fiddle Town, River Pines. I think it's several, the community is right next to Burke Ranch. And do exercises with them, do joint exercises because as we all know, fire is not going to stop at the boundaries of Burke Ranch or the city limits of the city of Plymouth. So it's important for us as we, you know, get our own communities and cities together, that we reach out to our neighbors and be able to participate, you know, in those indoor exercises as well. So that, this is, this was our setup from May when we conducted our exercise. We, we did it right in the area to where it was a common area for our residents and that's where all fire and two victims is part of as well.
You have an area where you can pick up some of these flyers, stuff that you've got?
Yes, yes. We can order those flyers, the one that you have from Cal Fire, we can get it from Cal Fire, we can get it from Amidale Fire Safety Council, you can also get them from the National Fire Prevention Association. And they're set out, they're set out free.
We've got a resort on the second boat of Canada.
Okay.
And we've got a group there that's got a couple of firemen and stuff that can keep us abreast of our landscape requirements to clear and rub. I've probably spent about $3,000 on tree trimming and stuff, an issue trying to improve things. We had one big maple tree that the bugs had gotten into and I saw it started to lean all of a sudden. Had a guy go up there and he says, you better get that thing down tomorrow because it's split. And all of a sudden, it started just kind of leaning out. So we had it taken down. They took it down between two of the massive trees and it just kind of bounced beautifully. But the guy cut it up and took about 20 feet of it. He's going to do some portable tables and stuff out of it. You know, machine. Him and his crew have got a lot of fire. But we have a group there, Neighborhood Association. I'd like to be able to pick up some of these. You need to go to one of these training sessions. So talk to you a little bit.
Okay, that, that sounds great. And actually, for the bark beetle, if you have trees that were infested and actually dead, the Amidale Fire Safety Council has a grant that they received from Cal Fire to be able to take some of those trees down as long as the money is available. So they have a lot of different things they're trying to do and Cal Fire is, they're getting a lot more money to be able to, to conduct, to do egress, ingress, to do the chipping days, to do fire breaks, to do, to take down some of the dead trees. We're trying to work with them to see if they can get a grant to be able to help with some folks that cannot afford to be able to take trees down. So they're not, they're not left out. So it is, it's kind of a new process for everyone as far as, you know, really becoming aggressive and proactive in what we're trying to do, but, but there's a lot of money out there for, for communities, for cities, for subdivisions, for anyone that's, that's willing to become certified, that will stand up and say, hey, I want to be a part of the solution. I want to be firewise. It doesn't cost the community or city anything. All it, all it costs you is your time to be able to put it together. And then to be able to partner with, with the folks that are, you know, have this ongoing to receive some of the grants and to be able to make all the communities, the county and overall really the state more safer for wildfires.
In your expertise and experience, we can use Barbara the whole city.
You know, actually, I've spoken with Dana and Kathleen. We've, we've done some workshops with you guys and did some different things and they've been a part of that. And I've told them that whatever help that you need to be able to help do the assessment form, to be able to write the action plan, just based on our exercises, whatever you need, we will certainly be there.
And would it be like, would you recommend like, say, neighborhood communities versus the whole city or how would you look at that?
I, I think it, it depends on if you have staff who can be able to manage the whole city. And if you fall underneath that 2,500 criteria. But again, you can, I have a couple more. I'm sorry, I wanted to go over some of the contacts. You know, your, your committee, the staff that you have dedicated to be able to work on this will really determine how you would like to split it up because I mean, it would make sense to me if you did it citywide, but if you have 3,500 residents, buildings, then you have to split that up and then manage it by those.
Or you could do it by community, like such communities as well.
Absolutely, like the subdivision or what was the other one? I think you were talking about.
Hawks, yeah.
Hawks, that one. And then have everybody kind of do joint exercises, joint workshops, bring them all together to do that kind of thing as you can, but.
That would be amazing for the communities, like to, to know that if you just were part of this and you put in some of your time, you could get amazing benefits to the community. They will cutting down trees or improving landscaping around your home and all that stuff.
Absolutely. And I can tell you that it's infectious. So when you see one person, one resident that will start limiting up their trees and then the neighbors are walking along and go, oh, well, look at that. That looks nice. And that's, that's going to be safer. And then all of a sudden, the grass, the shrubbery is cut down. So it looks great, number one. And if a wildfire does come through, it doesn't mean that it will stop entirely. It may not stop it at all. But at least it gives you a better chance. And they're starting to understand that. I mean, it takes a while to kind of get people in mindset to do this kind of stuff because again, we've always been taught that, you know, firefighters will be there, they will save the day. And they will be there, but they will tell themselves that they will look at a property that's defensible and one that's not, and they will go toward that defensible property first. Because they, they have to be able to do what they can do to protect themselves and protect all the residences in all the areas. Now, this is, these are some of the contacts that we have, the Amidale Fire Safety Council I was talking about. The outreach coordinator is Megan Watts, the Firewise coordinator, volunteer by the name of Big Stan. Amidale Fire Prevention District, Caleb Dale. And all of these folks actually participate and help us design our exercises and our workshops. Cal Fire, there's the area liaison supervisor, Carmel Barhart, Shane Marcus, the tactical chief. And then I'm the committee chair for Burke Ranch for my firewise. And I've been put on the National Fire Prevention Association, but they're there too. This, this is the group we were having an after-action review at the end of our exercise in May. And this is a combination of Cal Fire and Amidale Fire Prevention District, some of the community residents. And we're talking about some of the things that went right, some of the things that we can improve on for next year. So we'd like to have this become an annual event as far as the consolidated exercise with all the stakeholders. But it's, 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 like I said, it's very near and dear to my heart. I think it's, it's something that I, it's kind of, you can't lose. You, you, you start a committee, you build your foundation, build an action plan that's manageable by a committee. I'll certainly be able to help as, as a neighbor. And you, you get free money to be able to do these projects. And then you make yourself more resilient against fire. And I think, you know, having watched the Cal Fire come through and we were very lucky that it turned and went the way that it did as far as we were concerned. But it may not happen like that next time. So I was, I would thank you for letting me read this presentation, but, and I, and I hope that you'll think about this and if you have any other questions, you know, contact me, you know, so that we can talk more about it. I've kind of given you a down and dirty kind of presentation. There's a lot of details to it. But it, but it is, it will not cost you a thing and it will make your residents and your city that much more secure.
Thank you, Barbara, so much. Any questions? We're ready to discuss questions for Barbara. Yeah, no, it's, and especially, you know, you going through such a, such an event, like you said, Lake County, and bringing that, your expertise and sharing it here. So, so much appreciated. Hopefully we can get something going in that city or the neighborhoods. Like you said, it probably just kind of builds on itself.
It does. I mean, it really does. And if I'm a part of it, you know, working with Amidale Fire Safety Council and some of the other folks, you know, my, one of my goals generally is to be able, is to help make sure that everyone in the county becomes certified. Every, every subdivision and community, every city, I know, I know that's, that's an undertaking, but I want to be a part of that because I think it's that important. And as we go through and we, you know, we may be the only county to get to that point, but then every other county will start looking at us too. And so then that goes out to the bigger picture, which is the state.
So I just want to share that yet because we need Barbara here.
We've got a Neighborhood Association, started out 18 homes and then one subdivision and then there was one built close to us. We've got 19 people meet twice a year as a get together, a meeting and see what's going on. And we've been going over fire risks and stuff. It's got a lot of people's fire insurance in hand because of their maintaining a fire break around the place.
And I'm glad you brought that point up and I apologize for interrupting you, but I'm glad, glad you brought that point up because I should have brought it up. Because this is, this is a huge thing for insurance companies. Not everybody's on board right now. I mean, we're still working on that and the state insurance department is, is working on that, but right now you can get anywhere from 10 to 20% if you live in a firewise certified community. And one of the things that, you know, that we do is, you know, if we have someone that, or know of someone that needs to have a certification letter or a letter of explanation or something that we can send to the insurance company, we'll do that as well. We'll send them, you know, whatever they need from us to help them know that they have residents, they have people that are taking part and, and, you know, making sure that they're, they're hands safe. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara. Good change your presentation. Yeah. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. All matters associated with consent calendar are to be considered routine will be enacted by one motion. Discussions required. That particular will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately. We'll move to the 5.1 approval of the planning commission meeting at 10 minutes February 17th, 2022. Any discussion or if no discussion, just look to approve of the planning commission meeting at 10 minutes of February 17th, 2022.
I think we may have some of these. I believe those, oh, Mel came and then I thought, I know this here in person. Okay, I'll have to look into that. So I just give his leave and remember.
So should we just hold up until the next step?
Maybe. Because I wouldn't have all three that were in here, but maybe can, even though Commissioner Gomes wasn't here, I think she could still be a part of that vote. But we can just do it with amending as needed.
Okay, yeah.
It's up to you, but I do have that Commissioner Cozart joining the meeting at 16:03. So I remember that.
So what we can do is connect a motion to, for item present one, approval of the planning commission meeting at 10 minutes, February 17th, 2022. As amended, after reviewing the commissioner attendance. But motion to approve that. And do I have a second? No, no. Mel, would you like to second the motion to approve the?
I'm sorry, I was sorting some papers. I missed you. Yes, I'll second that. Thank you.
No problem. Let's go ahead and go for a whole call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomes?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno and Vice Chair Sullivan are absent. Chair Clapprock?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
There are, for item six, there's no public carrying items, no unfinished business or new business, we'll move to reports. We'll start with any of the commissioners, any items to bring up, just on the report section? Now, let's go to the planning director.
Yeah, I have a couple of items to bring up. First is the housing element, we've been working with the other cities in the county, in the county, to compile a draft housing element, and that will be going out for circulation and public review in the next week or two, so, heads up for that. It's reviewed for thirty days, and we take comments, and then we send it to the state for review and work back and forth with the states to get them to be satisfied with it, and it will eventually be approved, renewed by the planning commission and the city council, that was the first update. A second is we, to date, issued four short-term vacation rental permits, so it was a little bit of a learning curve to get it off the ground, we had, most of the operators didn't under, didn't work totally aware of the TOT tax. So it's taken some time to get everyone caught up to that, figure out what back taxes they owed, so we've had, we've collected a good amount of back taxes, and are working with other homeowners to collect more, and so, as I said, four, four permits have been issued. And then the other final news is this, will actually be my last meeting here with the city of Plymouth, I have my time here, we're wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. I'll be moving on, I'm not sure yet who will be replacing me and helping out planning. But I'm positive that they will figure it out.
Wow, we'll miss you for sure, that's, new, new opportunities, I hope, for you.
Yeah, yeah, new, new opportunities, I'll be working still in the county and outside of the county, and so.
Outstanding, excellent. So the housing element will just come back once it's sort of finalized for review.
Yes.
Through the standard process.
Yep, and most likely, a consultant has been putting that together, and they were gonna hand it over to the cities then to run it through the review process, but we'll maybe see if that consultant can do that for Plymouth, since I'm assuming it will take a little while to fill this position or get someone or another firm in to.
Oh, thank you so much, it's great service. And then just the overall comments, I wanna thank, you know, Sam Sherman, thanks for coming and presenting for Caltrans. These, I think, these items for the communities, especially in smaller rural communities that don't have funding available to do projects like this, is amazing. And I think that's where the more, just like the firewise community that Barbara fell over, the more we can get our communities involved in, like, you know, searching out things that can be done, or opportunities that can bring funds and resources and projects to the community that really don't cost us anything, other than just input and time to actually get it off the ground. So thank you guys for being part of that. I know, Sam, it's part of your job, you know, stuff like this really helps us in Amador County, the city of Plymouth, that Barbara, we're all you do. Hopefully, we can just grow that firewise community, I think that's amazing. And then last but not least, any updates from city staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Excellent. All right, our next regularly scheduled planning commission is meeting day is, well, it's here November seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, the meeting will begin at six thirty. That meeting may be canceled if we don't have agenda items, so just a foreword on that. And with that, I'll go ahead and close the meeting of the city of Plymouth Planning Commission.